Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Today is Thursday, November 2nd. This is the Westwood Board of Selectmen. We are meeting in the Town Hall Selectmen Meeting Room, and we will begin the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will grant Westcat permission to both audio and video record this proceeding. Is there anybody else who wishes to record? Thank you. A very brief chairman's update. Just to update all the residents of Westwood that this afternoon at 5:00, we swore in our new fire chief, John Decker's. Very exciting time in Westwood. We have spent considerable time over the past few weeks wishing Chief Scoble well in his retirement, and we are excited to have Chief Decker's join us. Chief Decker's has a local connection in that he's a graduate of Severian Brothers High School, and he has worked in the West Hartford, Connecticut Fire Service for the past 25 years. So exciting changes for us in Westwood. To get our scheduled action going, we have a public hearing concerning two locations for an unattended donation container applications. And I want to welcome those from First Baptist Church and from the Lions Club. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'll just give a very brief high overview of the application. Saint Pauli Textile, which is a for-profit company, has submitted an application to place an unattended donation container in the rear parking lot of the First Baptist. It will be an eight-by-12 wood frame prefabricated shed. It's used to collect textile items such as shoes, sneakers, belts, purses, sheets, drapes, pillowcases, and of those sorts. These donated textiles are sold to a variety of government agencies and relief organizations, and will also be available to the church to distribute directly whenever the need arises. The church will also receive funding based on the amount of donated textiles. The second application is from the Lions Club for a location. This is formalizing an existing unattended donation container at Westwood Optical at 738 High Street. This will be used, this is obviously a smaller one, for smaller items, a four-by-four U.S. mailbox-sized container for the collection of lenses, frames, cases, and sunglasses for distribution throughout the United States for those in need. And this provides support to many local charities and not-for-profits. And Janice, all the formalities around applications and processing are in place?
They are.
Any objection from your team?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
Janice, just quickly, what kind of things are required now and why? Just so that everyone understands.
Some of the items required are an application and also an application to the planning board in which the town planner doesn't, if she sees, if she considers it administrative, she will do an administrative site plan review to look at the parking lot and make sure that the unattended donation container is not taking up parking space and, you know, affecting the parking for the site. Abby McCabe did do a site plan review for both of these properties, containers, and they were administratively done. And she found, she filed decisions with the clerk and found them to be compliant with the parking recommendations for those lots.
No, I know the Lions Club and the church do a fantastic job, so I don't have any questions. I know you'll take care of what needs to be done in town, so thank you both.
So this is a public hearing. I know we have petitioners here. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the license for Saint Pauli Textile Inc. for an unattended donation container at First Baptist Church, 808 High Street. And also, we approve a license for the Westwood Lions Club for an unattended donation container at Westwood Eye Care and Optical at 738 High Street. And in the latter, that we waive the license fee of $50 and the site plan review fee of $100.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
This is the busiest town meeting ever.
Your engine didn't even-
It's called efficient. It's efficient.
Your car engine hasn't even gotten cold yet.
Thank you.
We'll see you guys. Thank you.
And thank you for doing it because I think it's really important to provide this opportunity. And just, all we want is to keep it clean, but I think that's what you want too.
Do it the right way, yes.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
The second matter is an extension of hours for High Street Market. So this does not require a public hearing. This is solely a vote of the board. And this is a request from Liz Adams, the owner of High Street. It's two requests. An extension of hours for a wine tasting on Friday, November 17th. And she would be open until 8:00 p.m. that evening. And a request to be open on Sunday, December 24th, Christmas Eve, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We have extended the High Street Market's hours in the past for similar events without problem. Janice, am I correct?
Correct.
The alcohol review committee voted unanimously in favor to recommend approval to the Board of Selectmen.
No questions?
No, I mean, Liz has done this every year, and if she wants to stay in competition with the other places, I'm happy to. Let a small business compete.
Do we have to take any action?
You have to take a vote.
Approve.
That's not a motion there. Okay, I move that we approve the extension of hours for High Street Market for a holiday wine tasting on Thursday, November 16th until 8:00 p.m. And also that they be allowed to be open on Christmas Eve, which is a Sunday, December 24th. Hours from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
I'll second that motion.
No, I'm sorry, Michael. Hold on one second. A friendly amendment. The date is actually Friday, November 17th.
Oh. Correct. Friendly amendment accepted.
Friendly amendment accepted.
Right. Sorry. I didn't change it in the motion, that's why.
No, we second it.
Okay, sure.
It's Friday, the 17th, not Thursday, November 16th.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So Friday, November 17th. Yes, I will second that motion.
Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. So Nora and Mr. Patterson, is it? Do you want to join us?
Wait, wait, sorry.
Sorry.
Whichwich sandwich?
Whichwich.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong. I missed this one too. I will, I'm gonna go back. I forgot about it. I'm looking at the wrong one. I'm sorry. We have one other, wait, addition. Whichwich sandwich common victular change in ownership. Janice, do you want to just give us a quick update on that?
Yes, a new company just purchased the franchise. The name of the company is Black and Yellow Boston LLC, and they'll be taking over the business on December 1st. Applications have been submitted. Fees, query check has been completed. And there are no changes that are gonna take place inside the shop. Health permits have been applied for, and they're pending.
I just can't, I can't picture this place.
It's a sub-shop.
It's a small.
And it's called Whichwich. So you're going to pick which sandwich you want, which meat you want, which bread you want, and they make it fresh right in front of you.
Was it one of the pre-existing buildings?
No, no, it's in University Station.
It's the strip of buildings close to the street, close to University Avenue, am I right?
Oh, okay.
In the middle or to the apartment side?
Delbon-
I haven't gone down since noodles closed.
I think it's next to Delboni.
Yeah, Jules.
Yeah.
Delboni, yeah.
I don't have anything.
Nope. I have no questions.
Okay, so I move-
So, is it closed now? Did it close, Nora?
No.
No, it didn't?
No, it's open, and I think this transfer happens on December 1st.
December 1st, okay. I didn't know if it closed in between.
I don't, I don't believe it's in, it's not gonna close at all.
I move we approve the change of ownership from Whichwich Superior Sandwiches to Black and Yellow Boston LLC, subject to completion of the health department permits or approval of the health department permits. Excuse me.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, Nora. The gentleman?
Jack Patterson. Hey, Jack.
Hey, Jack.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for joining us.
So when we last met on the 16th, we had a lot of questions about the Blue Heart Tavern, about potential locations, the cost of restoring the building, and the ownership. Mrs. Saida had asked me to put together a matrix, which I did, and I believe you have copies of it, looking at the different development options. Looked at three separate locations and a number of different options. One, for the town owning it and using it for office space or a cultural center. One, having it privately owned by Petrusy Yellow Properties for the same use. Having the town own it and lease it for some type of commercial use. Or having Petrusy Yellows do the same, leasing it for commercial use. Or having the town own it for residential uses or Petrusy Yellow Properties owning it and leasing it for residential uses. So I put together a matrix looking at each of those different options at the location on Washington Street, location on School Street, and a location at the rear of the municipal parking lot. And the colors that you'll see there, if there was anything that was significantly negative, it comes in a pink color. If it was moderately negative, it's yellow. And if it was positive, it's in green. And as you can see there, that the two most positive options would both involve the developer, Petrusy Yellow Properties, maintaining ownership of the property and renting it or leasing it for residential use, either in the School Street location or at the rear of the municipal parking lot. The reason for that, the ownership is one issue. There are prevailing wages if the town is the one that owns it. So that increases the cost of the development. Another increase in the cost of the development has to do with whether it's a commercial institutional use or a residential use. So ownership by the developer is always less expensive, and a use for residential use is the least expensive of all. As far as locations go, the two locations, either School Street or at the rear of the parking lot, are both in residentially zoned districts. So if it's a residential use in a residential district, there's, it's an allowed use.
And how is, what are his thoughts on this?
His thoughts are that he would like to keep the building himself and use it for residential.
What would he put, two units?
Probably two units. I think he's still exploring that, but that's what it looks like.
And would he be willing to keep it at where it's basically sitting now?
That's a possibility. So that's the School Street location. And the other possibility is in the rear of the municipal parking lot. There's a residential structure there now that he purchased, that property. You access it off of Washington Street, going behind the Northeast Securities building. There's a, there's a house up there. So that's the other location. Put it where that house is or put it on School Street. I personally prefer seeing it on School Street because it's a-
Right, I agree.
-attractive historic property.
And it offers a buffer.
It does. It's a great transition to the-
You really wanted to kind of point it out in the beginning, and it seems to work.
That will depend on which way you turn CVS?
It will. So in order to put it on School Street, CVS would have to have its long side along Washington Street. The way the concept plans were developed, they were showing CVS with its long side along School Street. So the engineers are still looking at the plans, and they'll see what they can get in. What's gonna determine which way that goes in terms of what the engineers are saying? Well, a lot of it has to do with the traffic flow. Originally, the reason they had put it with the long side along School Street was to have the right traffic flow for a drive-through. The drive-through is no longer part of the picture. So now it's just a question of entrances and exits. If you, if you are using School Street to exit the property, you probably want to be as far from the intersection as possible, which would encourage having the long side of the building along School Street. But if you're not using School Street as a principal exit, if your principal exit is on Washington Street, that's no longer an issue.
Nora, could, is there a scenario where there will not be an egress from the parking lot onto School Street?
It's unlikely. It's possible, but I think we'd have to see the traffic study that if you made all the traffic go onto Washington Street, you'll probably worsen the effects on the intersection than if you have some of the traffic going onto School Street.
No, that, I think you're gonna have some people who go to CVS who wanna come back to School Street and then go-
You force them to go around.
Yeah. You don't really want to tie it.
So I think you want to design it so that you split the traffic to the greatest extent possible.
Or it's almost like a right turn only out of there or something.
All right. Well, we talked about that trucks wouldn't be able to make a left turn coming out of it.
It's too narrow a road for the trucks to make a turn, yeah. So it would not be reasonable for us to impose a requirement for where it'd be located at this point? I think you'd be restricting it too much at this point. I think we should allow the plans to go to the planning board and allow a little flexibility. If it's, if it's not proposed in an area that you believe makes sense, then I think you step in at that point. But we certainly could express a preference at this time. We could, yes.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, if it was on that, on the School Street side, he could actually make a walkway, you know, along the side of the building and have parking, further parking for the park.
Right.
And just a walkway to allow that, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm glad that we're trying to save it. I mean, I do think that's the right outcome.
Yeah, I think this is great.
So.
Well, I think, doesn't it also speak to him looking at the residential use doing well in this area? Yes, yes. I mean, it's got a, if he's inclined to want to do this, he must be getting good signals from the market. I believe he is, yeah.
Do we, do we know what, how many he's rented on that original building?
I believe four units are already occupied. I believe there are a couple more that are, you know, discussing leases. I think there are at least four available apartments.
And two have to go through.
Then two affordable apartments. So the affordable apartments, the applications are due on Friday, and the lottery is scheduled for November 13th for those two units.
Could he use the two affordables on the tavern?
Um, no, because it's already structured, so they had to be in the original building. His approval for that building required it.
He could use them in the next phase.
Yes.
You know, if he gets there, he could use that house as-
As towards his requirement.
Towards the affordable requirement.
If it's part of the same project. So with the lottery applications due tomorrow and the lottery occurring on the 13th, when will that mean that people will be able to move into those affordable units? Is that a fairly- Well, what happens after the lottery, you get a list of qualified individuals who, they'll be ordered in the order their number came up in the lottery. And then the property owner reviews those applications and compares them to their requirements. So you might have someone who meets the affordability requirements under the HUD guidelines but may not be able to meet the property owner's additional credit requirements. So there's, there's some time involved. By year end? I would hope so, but it, not necessarily. It depends. If the first person on the list qualifies under both requirements, they can move right in.
Yeah, because they also do like credit checks.
They do, right.
You know, the history check and a query check and all of those things.
So as an example, at Gables, they found that for every four names on the list, one of them would pass the Gables standards. So if that's the same, depending on how many are on the list, it could take a while.
Right.
Is there anybody, Mr. Leaden, anything on this? Any thoughts, anybody? Okay.
The only query check, is that's required for the-
Yeah, for most, for most of the affordable housing, there's always a query check done. And I know for Gables, they were doing it part of the, you know, process.
But those turn around pretty quickly.
Yes. Generally, you can turn them around in 48 hours. So usually, they run right through the police and the police department. Yes, yeah. Out we all.
So you don't need any action from us tonight?
I don't. So this was just information for you to consider whether you-
Yeah. No, it sounds like a plan.
So Jack, what are you guys thinking of the historical question?
You know, if you would ask the commission, and there are five members, you might get five different answers, and I wouldn't want to speak for them all.
Sure. You're here, then. How about you?
My interest was in preserving the structure.
Yeah.
And not because I think it's an attractive structure or it's representative of an architectural period or, but because of the things that happened there.
Yeah.
Because of the history of what occurred at that location or in that building. So however that's done, and I would say I would've had a very hard time reconciling spending $1.2 million to do that.
That's where we're at, son.
That's where we're at, right.
Yeah.
And I don't have to get up in front of the taxpayers and defend it.
Right.
So you don't. So, but I think that, my thought was residential would be the best way to go. And if he's willing to keep the building and restore it, and I think that's the perfect ending.
Well, I think it probably will look a lot nicer as a restored house than the lovely yellow that is on it today. So I would have two requests. Try to keep it on the same-
One that not be yellow.
Yeah, try to keep it on School Street, the historical color.
The yellow could go. I, yeah, I'm sure it will be much, much more tasteful. And I know, you know, through the planning board, there'll be opportunity. But, you know, I think it would be great to see the building repurposed and looking a little more spiffed up and functioning well for whomever will have an opportunity to live there. And they can invite people over for drinks. It's not gonna be a tavern. Whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
That's great. That's good progress. I think, yeah, I think we should pass some word to Petrusy Yellow that we're glad that he wants to, to keep it.
Um, there is a request to backfill Mary Ann Carty's position. Mary Ann has moved on to a part-time position in Veteran Services. This is a pre-existing 35-hour-a-week budgeted position in the Assessor's Office. I am fine with giving permission without Mike here. My colleagues are in agreement.
I just have a request, if you can pass along, and this has happened for a while. Whatever font they're using with these-
That's not the font they use. That's our system. I don't know why it does that.
I hope this isn't what it looks like proposed.
That's not what it looks like. No, no.
I would only care if I was applying, but I know I'm not applying.
Yeah, it's the way-
And it's so hard to read.
It's the PDF, and what, usually I catch them.
Okay.
I can like thumb through them, and sometimes I miss them.
Okay.
It's sending it into our system. It reads funny, that's all.
It sure does.
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we authorize the town administrator to work with the Finance Director, Board of Assessors, and Human Resource Director to post and fill the position, the open position of Assessor's Administrative Assistant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I would ask that my colleagues join me in the revisions to the remote participation policy. I would like Mike and Tom to be here for that discussion.
It's actually very straightforward. So if you want me to explain, and then you can decide. Because it's, so the state went through open meeting law revisions, and we are still thumbing through those, so, but one of them was to review our remote participation policy. What it's doing is it's actually relieving some of the stress of people that are physically unable to get to a meeting. So before, it used to say that it wanted, you know, you had to have a very specific reason, and there were only four or five reasons that you couldn't be at a meeting and that were under the remote participation policy. Now, your physical, you know, physically being in attendance is unreasonably difficult opens that a little bit better. It's still at the discretion of the chair.
I was gonna say, what does unreasonably difficult mean?
Well, I think-
Yeah, that's a strange word choice.
I think what has me a little bit nervous is without any independent determination. I mean, physical attendance is unreasonably difficult if I'm in Hawaii.
Right.
But I don't want that to become our standard for attendance.
Right. So it's still, our policy is that you still have to have the sign-offs and be sent into the selectman's office and on file at the town clerk's office. So the remote participation policy under the state is a little bit less flexible. We are updating ours to meet that, but we are not changing our form or our process, that it still gets requested. You still have to put in to the chair, and the chair signs off on it and admits it to.
Where is that in the policy?
It's a form, which, it's not in here.
It's not in here.
Yeah, so there's, there were no revisions to our form.
So let's look at the form. I mean, do you need it before the next meeting? No, I wouldn't think so.
No, unless, Nora, do you, have you heard of any committees that are trying to remote participate?
I have not in the next couple of weeks, no. I'm not really interested.
Um, but it is a state-
Bandit.
Yeah, it's a change in the state, so I don't know if we have-
But what you're describing, between the state and us, it does, there's a disconnect.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
How do we do ours with the state doing this?
We just took what we take out.
And be compliant.
Yeah, so we had on our, on our form, you had to check off if it was a personal illness, a disability, a family or other emergency, military service, or geographic distance due to personal employment or business.
So we gotta take that off.
So we took that off. So now they, they still have an explanation box that says, "I will be out of the state," but there's no, we don't know, we don't require now, "Why are you out of the state?"
Yeah, let's do it another.
And the next one, I would ask-
I have to recuse myself.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm actually gonna ask to defer our action.
Are you?
Well, you should leave, because I'm gonna say something to Nora.
Yep, okay.
I do think Mike should be here for this discussion.
Yeah, I know. Have you, you've talked to him a little bit about this, Wegmans?
Yeah, so I, Mike and I met with Lou Vizzoli and Bill Condon.
I mean, I, I think, just from a philosophical standpoint, I think it's odd for us to be engaged in the business of a private industry survey. They can do that with or without us.
I think that, if I understood it correctly, Mike Gillette had asked them if they, they said they were interested in surveying their customers, and Mike Gillette asked them to bring it to your attention before they did that. And I believe that they created a survey and it was accidentally released.
Hate how that happens. Okay, so that, even more further, I just wanted to defer because frankly-
But it's only, John, it's only you and I voting on it, so it doesn't, you know.
It's just-
But I don't, I'm not-
Today, but we were not asking them to do a survey.
Yeah.
Suggesting that they not.
I mean, I have to be a little blunt.
I would say not to, because what does it, what does it do for us?
Yeah.
Nothing.
And frankly-
And how do we, I got a better question.
No, we get the question.
I, I see the questions, but better question. How do we know that the results are actually accurate? How do we know the staff didn't fill the book?
So the discussion we had-
It's a push-pull, you know?
The discussion we had, it was a little over a week ago, was that this would be a licensing question that would come before the board, and that they could apply for a license, and that's the point at which it would come before the board. But that we felt it was unlikely to go forward at this point.
But Nora, do we have, see, I guess, I guess where I'm a little bit confused, and I'm sorry, if we wanted to defer the whole thing, we should, but maybe you know the answer to this. I didn't think statutorily, we had the right to grant.
Correct. We do not.[1566.25] Correct, we, we do not, so what they would need to do is they would need to make a request to the selectman. If the selectman thought there was merit to that request, they would have to put on a town meeting warrant, an article requesting a home rule petition to expand the authority to allow grocery stores in Westwood to sell spirits. Right now, they are not permitted, we have authority to allow wine and malt beverage.
So they can't come to us, have us reject it and go to ABCC, because ABCC wouldn't be able to authorize it either.
No.
They cannot, we have no authority.
Not yet.
Westwood doesn't have licenses available for the use that they want. So the question was whether or not the selectman would have any interest in putting an article to, to ask the town meeting to consider that.
But I, I believe there was a bill, and I don't know what happened to the bill, but there was one up on Beacon Hill to circumvent that process, the local process, but haven't heard anything about it since, so I don't know where it is at this point in time.
We did also speak to them about their ability now to apply for a pouring license as well as a sales license, which until recently, they didn't have that ability. But there was recent legislative action that allows that.
Yes, so
We encourage them to consider applying for sales of beer and wine in the store, which they already have, and then pouring for onsite consumption as well.
And we would have the authority to grant that.
You would.
Right, okay.
That would be, it would, it would take one of your pouring licenses, you have enough, you have others that are not used right now, so, available licenses.
I, I, I mean, that wouldn't bother me so much, I, I, I guess I'm, I just, I, I find this odd, you know what I mean, I, I think, I, I, I'm not sure why they're not reading the tea leaves correctly. Like, I don't, I know I have no interest, and I know the boards of selectmen before I served had said there will be no hard alcohol sold there.
So in our conversation, we discussed that we thought it would be a very unlikely to pass either the selectman or town meeting to, to submit a home rule petition, and they suggested that they would like to survey their customers.
And that's the difference.
And that's what they've decided to move forward. So it's not, the town is not participating in the survey, they're not encouraging the survey. It was just something Wegmans wanted to do on its own.
Thank you.
Sure, I don't know, do, do we need to take any action or just tell you? I mean, I would say, if we took a vote, I'd say no.
I guess the only thing that, that might be helpful is for you to express a public opinion that no matter what the results of the survey might be, your opinion on the matter is the same.
My, yeah, my opinion is never going to change at this point in time. And, and for anyone who really knows me, th, this is a hard line that I take on, on this, because I don't think the town is ready for this yet. I don't think that the people in Westwood feel that the need to have a liquor still that close. I mean, there's one, for anyone that doesn't know, there is one going in Norwood where Workout World used to be.
I believe that was the impetus to West, to Wegmans.
Yankee Spirits, which is, I have visited the one in Sturbridge, it's a beautiful store.
Wegmans is very concerned that they will lose customers to that.
Which customers are they losing, they don't have any that go there now.
Well, they're concerned that people will buy their beer and wine there, make one trip and, and not buy the beer and wine at Wegmans.
Hmm, that would be competitive pricing, I think is the number one.
Yeah, I mean, I
I'm not changing my opinion.
You know, you know it's a good night with Mike and I, I agree. But yeah, I, I don't, I don't see myself getting in line for this. I, you know, the notion that a standalone liquor store is going to have this major impact on this mega grocery store, I'm just, I'm not buying it. And I don't think, as a town, we've been offering liquor licenses for a decade.
Just about, two thousand eight.
You know, we, we made a commitment to the town and the townspeople were in favor and I, I stand with that. So, that's where I am. Sorry, so much, so much for deferring it, but, um, we'll have the discussion with Mike, do you want to let, can you let Nancy know?
Thank you.
So as we said at the beginning of this evening, John Deckers is now our Fire Chief. And the Fire Chief, um, by his position, serves on various, um, boards and positions. So we, tonight would, I would propose that we, um, appoint John Deckers as the Building Surveyor and the Forest Warden, which I believe are statutory positions. And then on our local level, to serve as a member of the Local Emergency Planning Committee, our Alcohol Review Committee, the Westwood Emergency Management Agency, the Stormwater Management Committee, and as an ex officio member of the Municipal Facilities Task Force.
And did you want to add him to the Islington Task
Oh, and the Islington Center Task Force.
Is he an ex officio member?
He's ex officio.
Ex officio, yes.
He'd be replacing Mike Reardon on that task.
Okay.
Okay.
Why would he be replacing Mike?
Uh, Mike asked to be removed from the task force due to his schedule, so Chief Deckers said that he would be very interested in taking over that position.
I move that we appoint Chief Deckers to the previously mentioned positions.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I did want to mention, while we were talking about public surveys and positions, and I failed to mention this in my Yeah, I failed to mention this earlier and I just, I do think it's important. This past week, with the storm that we all experienced, our Department of Public Works once again really stepped up and did an amazing job over the course of multiple days, I think they may still be working on making the town safe in terms of removing debris and trees and, um, cutting down large, uh, removing large trees that had fallen. And I just want to say once again that Todd Corchon and the team always step up and do an amazing job, especially overnight Sunday into Monday, and we thank them for that. All right, so a week from Monday is our Fall Town Meeting. And tonight, the Board of Selectmen will sign the warrant that will be posted by the town for the actual meeting.
Does that require a motion?
I, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I move that we authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign the two thousand seventeen Fall Town Meeting warrant and, uh, which will then be signed by the Town Clerk and the Constable and posted in all four precincts in town for public viewing as well as on the town's website.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so Christine, help me out, oh, here we go, okay, so I want to get to page thirty, um, four. And so, since I've only been at one town meeting, so do we, do we divvy the buff?
Yes.
And say who's going to own what?
Okay, so, yeah, so, I mean, just so you know, so Pam usually does like the first three.
Yeah, so, yeah, Pam
Okay, so that's Pam?
Yeah, Pam.
But with the Blue Hills, um
They're coming though, right?
They are coming and we do have a PowerPoint, but it is a Board of Selectmen sponsored article, so I just want to make sure that if there is questions
Oh, no, I think they should.
I think we should get to see it first ourselves, I know it has to go to the Town Clerk, but
It has to go to the Town Clerk, I mean, the, not the, the town moderator.
Moderators, thank you.
Um, so that's in the works, we're working with them to find out what, and who, you know, it would be Char, it should be, it would be Charlie Flahigh as our representative, is it going to be the superintendent, the insistence superintendent?
Yeah, I think we need to know.
We need to find that all out, so, that's, you know, as a Board of Selectmen, but whichever one of, of you would want to do questions, if there are questions.
I think the school committee should be there at, at the end of those events.
You can put me for that, and we'll, we'll figure it out as we get closer.
Okay, maybe Emily will be.
Yeah, and I'll talk to her.
That'd be good.
Um, the Gays
I'm willing to take it.
Gay Street?
Yeah.
I'll do the next one.
A few MODs, Nancy.
Interesting order to these articles.
I know, who, who decides?
Um, Michael does.
No, it should have involved him as well.
So we have fifteen and sixteen, Thompson Ave and Ark.
I'll take Ark and, um, I'll take Thompson Ave. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to go walk on it first.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in case anybody asks you any questions, you might want to go mine.
I, I think by that point, it will be
Yeah, I think at that point, it will be done, approved.
I still should walk down the street though. Okay, what else do we need to do on that?
That, um, that's it.
So I made a request to Betsy and she probably passed it along to you that I think it would be important to let all the boards and members of commissions know, remind them the importance of their presence at town meeting.
Talk to the Town Clerk about drafting a email that will go out to everyone.
Sooner rather than later?
Yep.
Yeah, because I, I think it's going to be tough on the quorum.
Yes.
So.
It could be.
Could be, yes.
Okay, well, we're gonna do the minutes from July seventeenth. I had no edits.
Nope, I did not.
This is the short notes, right?
Yes.
Never gonna let you off.
Nope, okay. Okay, I move approval of the minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Christine, can you do me a favor? I, I don't want to bring this up without Mike here. The study from Beta dated October twenty-fifth, can we put that on our next meeting as new business? And I would like Todd here.
Okay.
And Michael.
Yep.
I, I'm horrified at some of the results, at the volume increase on Hiroc, Dover, Conit and Lorraine.
Yeah.
I don't think it's acceptable for Beta to say we're pursuing grants. I, I think we need to do something fairly quickly. So, I'd appreciate it if they were here to talk about that. Is Mr. Bailey joining us? Oh, okay. Okay. Public Press, hearing none. At this time, the Board of Selectmen will be going into executive session to discuss one issue related to potential litigation with the Girl Scouts, which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussions were in open session. The Board will not be returning to open session.
I move we go into executive sessions for the aforementioned reason.
I'll second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
You want to do this?
No, I'll be going to executive session.
No, but we will not be coming back.
I did say that, we will not be returning to open session. Uh, Monday, November thirteenth at six-thirty in the Faculty Room at Westwood High School, that's before, um, town meeting, which is a week from Monday. Hope to see you all there, thank you.